Quick reminder, tonight's meeting is being voted on audio tape. Anyone in the audience, the county association board? Yes, yes, thank you. All right. Let's get right to it. Request for consideration. Do you agree? Sir?
You've got one tape over there on the table.
Yeah, that's mine.
Did you raise your hand, sir?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I didn't see it, thank you. All right, request for reconsideration for reorganization of the board. This has been spoken to ad nauseam. No need for discussion. I will entertain a motion or I will consider this done.
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, sir.
Too long now, the issue of the board reorganizing has been put aside. It's time to move on. When a new selectman is elected, he must be sworn in at the clerk's office and take an oath that includes the vital statement that priority number one is to act in the best interest of the public. The chairman is to set the example of how to conduct yourself in public functions, face of this board and the face of the town. You are not in the chairman position to run things your way. There is no room for personal agendas. Just because you don't agree with someone's opinion does not give you the authority to not recognize that individual. There have been times when you have been rude, arrogant, and used inappropriate language to show your frustrations. You, the chair, have the responsibility to be open and fair-minded and treat the people that voted after your position on the board with the courtesy, compassion, and respect they deserve, no matter what the issue. To address the reorganization of the board, I was literally appalled when this was done a short time ago by your board. Now you seem taken back by someone suggesting doing the same thing. I didn't support that action taken then, nor I do it, nor do I support it now. I think it sets an unnerving precedent. What if this board motions, votes, and does reorganize, and one month down the road, a number of taxpayers come to a board selection meeting and aren't happy with the new chairman and again request the board to reorganize? This position will become a revolving door. You, as the chair, have the responsibility, given to you, to be a leader that deals with town business in the appropriate manner. This board is there to resolve issues, not start them. This board is here to conduct town business, not become a local reality TV show. Again, I don't really think reorganization is the solution. It's up to you, Mr. Chairman, to conduct yourself in the appropriate manner moving forward. Thank you for the time you allowed me to express my opinions, and unless Mr. Knight has something to comment, let's get on with the meeting and take care of business. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your input, sir. Mr. Knight?
Nope.
All right. I will consider no motion. This issue is done. Next, minutes.
I would have motioned we approve the executive session minutes from September 12, 2017, as written.
I will second.
Motion's made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
And I would have a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from September 12, 2007, regular session.
I will second.
Motion's made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good to see a lot of people here tonight. We're here every Tuesday or every other Tuesday in case, you know, you want to come again.
Here we go. All right. Correspondence. The officer received a monthly report from the fire chief for the month ending August 2017. Thank you, sir. The officer received a request from the park and rec department requesting use of the gym from now until Halloween in order to set up the haunted house.
I have no problems with that. You have any? Nope. Okay. Much?
No.
Is she in there now, Bob?
She was gonna say. I think she's in there now, Bob.
Thank you.
I got so much stuff in this chair that it's gonna take a lot of long news. Usually it takes me two weeks.
No, it's, uh, the town enjoys it and has the years, so just keep doing what you're doing.
The officer received a copy of a thank you that the conservation permission recently sent to Mr. Jim Pouten for his recent donation of 30 yards of loom for the Lucy Stone Restoration Project. Thank you, Mr. Pouten. The officer received a letter from the residents in Washington Street, in the Washington Street neighborhood, requesting that the speed limit signs be erected. They have also contacted the chief regarding this matter, and he suggested that a letter be sent to the selectmen for consideration. The chief is in support of their request.
Can I call him?
Perhaps. We can have work to establish a, what we feel is...
I spoke with the residents a number of times, and we've run rate up a number of times, I think posting it would be, meaning it's a solution. It's temporary, not anything, but I'd be happy to...
The officer received a request from the war and fire department seeking permission to set up a department website. This will not be a public forum and would be only for informational purposes. Access credentials will be limited and overseen by the fire chief. That is here.
I do not get no problem with that.
Just to expand a little bit, we're just looking to provide a little bit more informational stuff online, some more additional links for people for permitting purposes and information that the fire marshal's office can provide on certain public safety topics and that kind of stuff. So it's just something we just wanted to keep everyone in the loop with and it'd be closely monitored. There's not going to be any public forum or anything, anyone that could post to us. Strictly a couple of people that would be able to do that, but it's more for updating and everything, so. Something we were exploring, we're just looking to, you know, to reach a type of medium, so.
So I'm glad to see you're following the social media policy, number seven, which requires the approval of the town to use town logos and things of that nature and then set up a website, so it's good to see that policy's being administered and being followed by the fire chief, so. I have no problems with it. All right, sir?
No. No. Anything else?
Uh, yes. Do we want to vote on that or just, it's okay?
I mean, I don't know if it really wants to vote.
The officer received notice from E to E Fall Course Offering at Ware's Education to Employment Center, excuse me. Courses are open to all residents of the Quaybuck Hills region. More information can be obtained by contacting the selectmen office.
It's also, I believe, on Marion's and Wing's website.
I have, I put the EMT course offering that they are, if that's on our website, but there was, there was a list of courses that, you know, residents might want to...
The town always needs EMTs. We kind of have a revolving door on that. The chief can attest to it, so. Anyone wanting to go for it?
But they do have pretty good courses.
They do. They have a lot of really good courses. Anything else?
Apple T's?
Nope.
That's it?
All right. Request for one-day liquor license for the West Warren Public Library on 10/28/17. Anybody from the West Warren Public Library here?
They're gonna be hosting a teen trivia night. Do a couple of these throughout the year.
Stretching.
Now, this has been done many times.
Yep. Mr. Knight?
I have no problem.
Okay. I'll entertain, do we? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to request a one-day liquor license for the West Warren Public Library on October 28, 2007.
Second. Motion's made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chief? Bit awards. Cemetery Utility Building to La Rochelle Construction, Inc. Vote expected. Thank you for showing up. Appreciate it. Uh, we did have a chance to look at the plans. Uh, the only thing that kind of struck us was the cost of a building that size to be that amount, but, um, you know, you guys are elected, Joe money, um, I kind of look at it in as that. Do you have any questions, Mr. Knight? Any questions?
I was, you know, be quite honest, I was just taken back, again, like Mr. Chairman says, the price, it's just, I look at the plans and, and that was a low bid.
That was a low bid, yes.
And the high bid was, what, $135?
$136,500 was the high bid. The middle bid was $115,527, and the low bid came in at $82,500.
And don't you think there's a $136 to $82?
There's definitely a huge gap.
That's a big gap.
Absolutely, uh, but being with the $82,500, with paying prevailing wages, it's the town project and everything, I mean, we can't get any other bids.
Okay, my only other question is, is this a complete package? Is this a finished building?
In regards to, I'm sorry, say that one more time?
Is this a finished product?
Yes, uh, even the electrical will be pre-wired into a panel for future, because there's no electricity that actually goes to the building that's existing now, but as far as anything future, all the electrical will be run into a panel. Everything is up to code, I mean, just, we won't need anything else.
Jack signed off on it?
Um, I'd have to ask, I'm not quite sure.
It has been under review, but he hasn't issued a permit yet because there isn't a contractor to assign the permit to.
Okay. Okay. But he has had it under review and you, yeah, has it been?
Yeah, absolutely.
My only other question is, has it been consideration, once the electric is brought to the building?
Mm-hmm.
That's coming right from Maple Street for the shed?
Correct.
Obviously, it's not going underground.
Uh, well, in the future, it possibly could. That's what I said.
My only concern is the people that are interred in the ground, you know?
Correct, yeah.
The town has a history of way, way back and, um, just, I'm afraid that if somebody comes in and starts digging even for the foundation, what if they come across the remains of somebody?
Oh, well.
That is a good question. I mean, we're trying to take every precaution that we possibly can, with shoring from grades from behind and then also looking through all previous records to guarantee, try to guarantee that.
My biggest concern is, you know, when you do a footing, you just don't do that.
Sure.
You know, there's, that was, you know, brought up to me by a couple of people, and I don't have any answer to that, but I think that's something that somebody has to be aware of, that, uh, I don't think I'd be digging a lot of, you know, you're basically digging in a cemetery.
Correct.
That was one of the reasons that there was an actual mandatory attendance to the site so that the contractors were made aware of those markers that were focused to the structure. And there has been a conscious effort of moving towards the center roadway away from those markers. It would not be encroaching any closer to, uh, markers that are known to the cemetery commission at this time.
That was my only concern. Obviously, with the cost, it's not like you said, Mr. Gagian, that, you know, it's not up to this board to make the decision on how they spend their money. I think it's way too costly, but it is what it is, I guess.
John, you have anything?
Yeah, I just have a question on, uh, what definition we have for perpetual care. I understand that money is coming out of perpetual care account for the cemetery.
Yes.
I've always been on the impression that the perpetual care accounts for any cemetery would be used to maintain the cemetery itself. I mean, I understand they need a new building, but eighty-some-odd thousand dollars is a lot of money to invest in a new building to store tractors or whatever.
I believe we had, um, we had asked that question. Becky? We had asked that question, and what we got back was that they are allowed to use that floor.
I mean, we always talk about the trees up there and the road conditions up there. Pretty sad shape. You would think that the higher priority would be to take care, I mean, it's a very serene location and we'd like to maintain it. Uh, I have no relatives up there, but if I had, I'd be making a bigger point.
Do you guys have meetings?
Yes, we do.
You have public meetings?
Uh, we have them up in the cemetery. I'm not quite sure because of public...
Okay, because you guys, you guys are elected.
Yes, correct, yes.
All right, so when these things come up in the future?
Sure, yeah.
Just, you know, for questions, just as John brought up?
Sure.
Maybe come in here maybe or come in and have a public meeting just so that everybody can get their words in, get, you know, their concerns heard and addressed.
Typically, right now, if somebody has a question or concern, they notify us and then we try to address it as best we can, uh, but that isn't a valid point. We could do a little public, so that we're there, they could, uh, everybody could be involved in it.
Okay. Excellent. Anyone else? Yes.
Um, just a question and comment. First of all, what equipment are you going to be storing in that huge building? And second of all, just because you have the money, doesn't mean you should spend it.
Uh, correct. The building size is only going to increase five feet in each direction, uh, so it's actually not going to be that much larger than what is existing, but what it is going to give us is allow us more room for the equipment that we do have, because we also have over a $10,000 lawnmower to take care of the grounds, and we want to make sure...
How many?
Like, around $10,000 is what the lawnmower would cost or what we, that we have.
Do you say eight of them or one?
No, we have one of them.
Or one, or one?
But it's a larger machine, and this would be able to, be able to do repairs on it and then also have stores for everything else that we do use up there and not be able to have to pull everything out just to be able to work on something and then put everything back in, it'd be a little bit more space.
Okay. And at this point, it's kind of past those types of questions, because now we're at the, you know, building it phase. Um, if no one else has a question, I'm gonna entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to allow the cemetery to proceed with their project.
Second. Motion's made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Can we copy that?
Yes. We'll send it to you.
Okay.
We need to get rid of these guys.
Couple chairs over there.
Get rid of them, we can see.
I'm not gonna stay here, so be nice. I'm not gonna stay here, so be nice. Yeah. Right.
Okay. Appointment to Conservation Committee, vote expected. We have Otto, I'm gonna say Chalito or Chalato. So Otto here?
I don't think he can see.
All right, um, going to Conservation Commission until May of 2020. entertain a motion, sir?
I will make a motion to appoint Otto Chalato to the Conservation Committee till the date expressed.
Second. Motion's made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think that is a great recommendation from ConCon.
Excellent. Sir? Chief of Police, request for decision regarding sergeant's position in dispatch, possible vote. Chief, you are up.
If we could address the dispatch issue first, we've had, about a number of times, we've had discussion relevant to a full-time dispatcher. After the budget was finalized in May, I had one dispatcher resign, another one tried a different job venture. The job venture didn't work out for her. She requested to come back to work as a part-time dispatcher. I sent the board that email back on August 17th. Um, I don't know if she's still interested, but we've already trained her. She can walk through the door and start working. Right now, I have two officers a week that I'm filling with, by whatever means possible. I know a couple of my dispatchers are here, they're working a lot of hours. It's boosted my overtime numbers up a little bit since she's been gone, but I need to get at least one more part-time dispatcher back in the door. When the budget was approved back in May, I had three full-time, four part-time. I'm down to three full-time and two part-time. So if I hire this another part-time dispatcher, I can stop some of that bleeding, so. Uh, I'd like to offer that job back up to the woman who vacated it if she's still available. Um, that requires consideration by the board to certainly then the hiring process, as she already wasn't a utility.
Any questions, sir?
No, I had a conversation with Mrs. Berikovsky concerning this today, so, uh, I'm pretty much all set.
All right.
Bruce, his email, I came into our office last week with regards to a new request for administrative dispatch position. Do you elaborate on this email?
Yeah, what I'd like to do, and again, we've had a lot of discussion recently, I know with the regionalization effort that ultimately didn't work out, there's still some talks about some other options for us, and with the recent, over the past few years, with the changes in dispatch training and equipment, and now with Next Gen 911, it's created a whole new batch of administrative responsibilities, and it's become, in essence, it's become an entity all in and of itself. A lot of departments have changed over to a dispatch supervisor, a lot of that dispatch supervisor to oversee the equipment, the staffing, the training, um, make recommendations for, uh, job offerings, participate in the hiring process. Uh, I think it's something that the board should consider. I, I think it would relieve a lot of the administrative burden, certainly from myself and from the sergeant, and possibly from the town as well. And if we could, I know it's not a good idea to impact bargaining contract, especially when this contract was just ratified, but within the past nine months. However, I think if it were presented to the union in a light favor of both of them, it might be just something that they could agree on, but that would involve a box between the board and the union. But having a dispatch supervisor, again, it would relieve a tremendous amount of work for me, for my assistant, the vetting process, the training, um, it would be an asset to us for a small scale, and I think I listed my application.
So, let me ask you a question. So are you asking us to approve the part-time and then you're actually going to seek a full-time supervisor?
From someone that we already employ, not an additional, it's not an additional position, it would be someone who's already unemployed, who'd be willing to accept the responsibility.
So that leaves a three-full and four-part-time?
Three-full and three-part right now.
If you hired this other part-time back before, do you want to make one of the three-full administrative position?
One of the three-full times, yes.
So let me ask you this question. Just going back to the spring, when I mentioned the lieutenant's position, when we had this discussion, you were in favor of it, then you weren't, and I understand why, and I understand your position with regards to sergeant, you wanted boots on the ground, and you had cited that the lieutenant's position would be more of an administrative role, um, and you were really looking for somebody with more boots on the ground. So if we don't go with the lieutenant position, but we go with the sergeant, which is in the CBA and you have the right to hire somebody, and I think the email you sent us with the person that you had internally interested is a, is a great candidate. Don't get me wrong, and that's my opinion. But why would we want to go with administrator? We could go with an administrative type of position with the lieutenant to help out with these causes. I just, I don't understand why we need administrator to administer directive over six employees. I just, that's why we have you and that's why we have the sergeants.
Exactly. That supervisor position really is a conduit between the dispatch office and me, but would be able to assume the day-to-day decisions if she's granted or she's granted that authority to make those decisions without proving everything through me first, to seek the, um, training opportunities, to keep the equipment, to make the connection, 911, LEAPs, AFS, whoever we need to contact. It's, it's not a huge responsibility, but it's a significant one.
So in your email, chief, you'd stated also that in reviewing the budget, I would only see an actual cost savings of $1,500 in the first year, and I understand that the benefit package would far exceed those savings. So are you telling us that adding that person is actually going to add to your budget?
I'm, I'm sorry, which position are we talking about?
The administrative one, to add that new position, that administrative dispatch?
If the board agrees to any type of stipend, it would be, in my, my recommendation, I believe in that email, is for some sort of weekly stipend, that again, would have to be negotiated through the board and the union, whatever they agree to.
But it's just, my point is, it's just going to be added costs. There's really none of savings, it's, it's going to be an added cost.
It would be the cost of the stipend, whatever is agreed to, whether it's $25 a week, which would roughly be $1,200 a year, uh, $1,500 a year.
Thank you. That's all I have, sir.
As far as the sergeant's position goes, um, we had many meetings on that also. I have a viable internal candidate. He did a fantastic job. My recommendation in my email was for the board to appoint that person in mid-December and make that appointment conditional upon a one-year probation period beginning January 1st. I've already scheduled him, he's already attended one training, one supervisory training. He's scheduled for a second one at the beginning of the month. I just wanted to make sure that the board was, on board with him.
So this was the candidate you put in the emails, was correct?
Yes.
Which I'm in favor of, that person.
Mm-hmm.
Can we schedule, I just have some questions for the candidate.
Sure.
Would it be okay to schedule a meeting with the chief and the candidate if the union revenue needs to be there? I'd like to, I don't know the background for this individual, I mean, I know the individual, but I don't know, you know, everything there is as far as his educational background and that, so it'd be interesting to see what he has, if he has.
I forwarded a job description, which the board has. I forwarded, uh, the recommendations that I thought were necessary to have the job. He exceeds those qualifications.
So knowing that you have, you want to do this in January, Bruce, do you have enough money to cover the salary line for the end of the year, bringing him in, putting him into this position in January and serge potentially retiring April?
That's exactly what we budgeted for. I budgeted for the sergeant's position.
So what about filling his position? That was the question that I have.
We've started the budget, let me see if I can back up a little bit. We budgeted for the current sergeant through his retirement period, and that's it. That is, his salary line ends there. We budgeted for the new sergeant based on a worst-case scenario for us financially as of January 1st. I also budgeted for the replacement of the body, which would be an entry-level patrolment, which we've begun the testing, excuse me, we began the testing on.
And what's the timeline on that position?
We have, um, I should be, all I need to do left is interviews. We've done an exam, we've done a physical fitness evaluation. All we have left to do is some interviews, some rounding up, some local chiefs helping with the interviews, but I should be able to have a recommendation of board in a month.
See that posting in the paper from Munson?
I did not.
They required academy, I think it's 22-something an hour or something was the salary range?
Up there.
Yeah. They had it in there, need not apply or something if you don't have academy or...
I have it here.
Automatically disqualified.
Yeah. Sorry.
I have a question.
I have a copy here if you want to see it. Says candidate who have not already completed a full-time police academy will not be automatic, will be automatically rejected, and the price range, salary 2289 an hour to 2660 an hour.
Which I believe is significantly higher than ours. Now, just going back through past experiences that we've had, we have advertised a full-time academy certified, and I've had all those conversations with the board about the applications that we receive.
With that posting being a significantly higher wage than we start out, it's also been listed since April. They've been unable to fill it. I initially saw it in March or April.
Twenty days.
They reposted it, ma'am. Any, you stay here. Any questions, sir?
Uh, no, I'm, uh, quite honest. I'm in favor of supporting the chief on the sergeant's position along with the candidate that has been brought forward, but, uh, dispatch supervisor, no way. Not for three people. That's what you have a sergeant and a chief for.
Okay. Knight?
Problem done.
Okay. Um, in which case then, I mean, you're a strong chief, you can pretty much, it's your call to make, but, um, do you wish to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to, uh, go along with the part-time dispatch position.
That's the only motion that needs to be made? Sergeant's in the CBA.
Yeah, sergeant's in the CBA.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion's made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
And what I'm going to do is I'm going to offer that, I'll get ahold of that woman who actually emailed yesterday. She has not responded. I'll get ahold of her. She's eligible, I'll bring her before the board, and when it looks convenient for the board, I'm happy to meet with the sergeant's candidate and answer questions.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Discussion on Quaybuck Regional Middle High School Revised Assessment Calculations for FY '18 Possible Vote. This is pretty much a shift in the assessment.
We have a school thing over here. Oh, no, your former.
No.
I think I'm thinking planning board.
To just elaborate a little bit on?
What is the amount? I have no idea. The transportation reimbursement?
No, you guys doing that Monday. I got about $99,000.
$99,000?
There's a shift in the assessment, basically because I spoke to Cami.
Oh, probably because of student shift?
A little bit of student shift, and because the governor, because the budget was approved so late, you know, so Warren's share increased a little bit.
A tiny bit, yeah.
A small amount, which we can't necessarily take it from that transportation. Transportation comes back, and now we're going to have to go back and have to count.
Certify it.
Certify it.
Free cash.
You know, that $2,000 free cash, or if we're going to go against tax rate, I think it's about $2,000, it's not a substantial amount of money, but Kami was going to get back to me, I spoke to her, she was going to get back to me, with the wording on the article, we'll probably have to put something on the special.
I mean, the other thing the town could do is authorize the school to hold $2,000 in transportation back pay.
She told me, I asked that question over, Bob, and she said we couldn't. She said, you're going to have to bring it, it's canceled.
Yeah, it probably needs to be voted by the taxpayers.
I think because of the way we word it at the town meeting.
It's your article, that's what.
Yeah, so I think it has to be on the special.
I think that's what other districts do, they don't have that wording in the article that it has to, and a lot of districts now are setting up a stabilization, transportation stabilization type account, where the towns are allowing the school to hold that money for the following year, so that way it reduces the town. No, I'm not in favor of it. I'm not in favor of it. A lot of towns are doing that, you know, so.
What are yours?
But no, it's not something that I vote for, nor would I vote for, knowing that the town's.
Well, I was happy to see that they got 73% transportation reimbursement, because you know, that was good.
Yeah, no, it was like at, what was it, 72.1% or something, it was up there compared to what we used to, so.
That's a good sign.
We're pretty happy to see that.
Still far short of 100%, but they guarantee this, we have one point in time, but.
Take what you can.
If you listen to the reasons why at the stand house, you would have a good chuckle. They say, they say that it promotes competition when they don't give 100% on bids, but yeah, we bid three different times, three different ways, but still only get one bidder, so. Doesn't help us out, but maybe it helps Boston and Neade, you know, that's cool districts like that.
So, Mr. Chair, I think an article needs to be put on the special to let the town vote on the, and the school thing voted to accept this already, correct, Bob?
The transportation reimbursement?
No, the re, new assessment.
Yeah, we did do that.
Yeah, matter of fact, I think Kami sent that email to us.
Yeah, we did that Monday, actually.
Yeah, so I think it's just a matter of an article on the special, Mr. Chair.
All right, I'll entertain a motion and have that put on, to accept this and have that put on. Do we need to vote on it?
I don't think we need to vote on it, we just need to make, I think we just need to make sure we put it on the special.
All right, we'll get that on the special.
We're going to have that conversation with Kami.
Sorry, sir.
We'll have that conversation with Kami, just to make sure we word it correctly.
Nothing, Mike?
Nope.
All right. Special town meeting, discussion of possible dates and articles. We're looking at, I believe, November?
November 2nd at 6:30, and it's going to be held at the elementary school, Warren Community Elementary School. So Kami has reserved that for us.
So any departments needing an article, any people needing to get anything on there, need to have it into by October 2nd?
Yeah, we did send out a memo, originally scheduled for Quaybach, but that has changed, but still, there is a deadline for submitting articles themselves.
What time will you run that?
6:30, Bob.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me why only five days we're allowed to submit articles?
We need thirty days.
I mean, if the meeting is November 2nd.
For posting requirements and legal review.
Yeah, so, you know, Ned, our clerk has to have voter registration ten days. We have to post fourteen days prior to, we have to have legal review, and so we're kind of getting down in the timeline here, where we need to get any submissions, any requests in. We pretty much know what people already want, people already contacted us, you know, we got something for the council and anything. It's not going to be a wish list where we're going to certify free cash and have a spending frenzy, it's not happening. You know, there, I think, may be five articles we discuss, possibly, but if anybody has something that's extremely important, they should bring it before the board and make the request by next Tuesday, if we're meeting next Tuesday, they need to get here and make the request. But it's not to purchase vehicles, or equipment, or anything like that, wait till next year, it's just to handle business and, you know, and go from there. But I do believe we might have something with regards to that DOT, possibly.
Possibly, yep.
So there's a few things, I think maybe five articles, but if somebody does have something, they need to bring it to us. I mean, I know it's kind of short-term, but if they know, they should know by now, that they need something, I don't think it's a real crunch for them, and we don't want to make the special town meeting like an annual, you know, it's not a, like I said, it's not a wish list type of thing that, hey. So, that's about it.
Try to get it done.
And at the very least, send in a letter of intent.
Yep.
Great. And have we received anything since that's gone out?
We have, Dr. Costigian sent in, I just sent him a request, well, he's, he sent in a letter of intent today for the PA system at Quaybach.
Yep, I guess the PA's messing up and they're going to need to add. What's up with that, Bob?
It's just, it's old, it's old, it's almost original to the building, and the problem that we have, no, the problem that we have is that the system is actually so old that the people that service it won't service it anymore. Just can't get access to it. So they now have refused to service the system, so.
How much is that?
$45,000, probably. It was the last quote that we got, but I don't know, they're going out for quotes.
Use notes.
Hmm?
Use kids.
Full horns.
I don't know, tell you.
The last quote was in 2016, it was $35,000.
I'll shoot the messenger. I just heard about it, I just heard about it the other day, so, I mean, I guess, I guess something failed with it just this week, and it's in pretty bad shape, and we just found out that the people won't, and, you know, I mean, according to the district agreement, this is what we're supposed to do, it doesn't mean that things get approved or get passed, it's just this is the process that we're supposed to follow, so that's what we're doing.
So I'm just having them come in next week, it's a meet next week, I have them come in, some people, or Kami, it might be a good chance to maybe ask Kami to come in, she can explain about the article for the special.
Sure, I think that, I think it would be wise.
She was available tonight, I will point out she wasn't available tonight, I'm thinking we would need her tonight after this discussion, so.
I think it would be wise to have her, then, because then we could.
I just have her up to here as well.
Yeah. That's what the students, my mother's just saying, the students sound like it's Charlie Brown's teacher. But they are trying some different things, so maybe something, other things will work, they're trying to do some video messaging now to classrooms, to be able to do the announcements that way.
I have a high pass, I'm probably.
Do you have those special boards up there? I'm beating the face right, like Star Trek. All right, are we going to take a vote on the November 2nd?
Yeah, pick a date, I think, right?
I think the November 2nd, the elementary school.
I got you this.
Yeah. Entertainer motion?
Giddy up. I'll make a motion to approve November 2nd, Thursday, for the special town meeting at the elementary school.
6:30?
6:30.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Treasury wants an invoice.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve payroll warrant number 24, in the amount of $38,621.46, and vendor warrant number 25, in the amount of $36,165.86, dated September 18, 2017.
I will send it.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion that we approve warrant number 26, payroll warrant number 26, in the amount of $38,275.50, and vendor warrant number 27, in the amount of $29,175.69, dated September 25, 2017.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, new business. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Richard?
No.
All right, it's old but new twist on old business. The purchase and sale of the land up behind the water tower on South Bridge Road has finally been completed, the rollback taxes have been paid, and the specs for the cell tower have been approved, signed, and sent back to Industrial Communications. I spoke to the engineer on the project, he said there are four towers going up for them before the end of the year, this is one of them, and barring any unforeseen problems, once they get going up there, we should have our first couple of carriers up before the end of the year. So that's good news, that's a long time coming. And that's all I have on the new business. Comments and concerns? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Megan Laffco, and I live at toll 74, Brookville Road. It's my first meeting. I'm here because I, I've never met any of you guys, I've been here for 15 years, I've never even heard of your names. I'm here tonight because the police in this town, it's my understanding that there's money owed to them for overtime pay, and that it's being held up, and you guys maybe have heard about this before, but like I said, it's my first one, and I'd like to know how soon we can expedite getting this taken care of, so that they can either get their pay or a timeframe, and secondly, the person who is writing the checks incorrectly, if that is the case, it's also my understanding that it's happened with the fire department, gas cards, and now with overtime pay, and do we really need somebody to continue making these potential mistakes, if indeed that is what she's doing?
All I can really speak to at this point is, we had, we identified the issue, we immediately moved forward, got council involved, we got word back from council, and we have submitted to the union what they have come up with. As far as looking at if anything was done maliciously, if anything was done knowingly, we have to cross that bridge as we get to it. My first concern is getting the officers paid as quickly as possible, getting the officers paid fixed as quickly as possible. Is it happening as quickly as I would like? No, but I'm sure it's not happening as quickly as they would like.
Right.
Ten times that. So moving forward, I think what, what needs to occur is not the back and forth of emails, I think we need direct communication, and I'm going to speak to the president of the union right now. I think we need to sit down, board to board, and get this moving, because my take is that the only way we're going to get this rectified is to sit down and hash it out. There's a lot being said on both sides, there's a lot being done on both sides. To shoot an arrow, you got to pull back to get it to go, so sometimes you have to step back to move forward. Let's look at this as the stepping back, and let's try to move forward. Let's get some time, let's sit down, let's start talking, and see if we can get this rectified as quickly and expediently as possible, if you're willing.
The last thing I would just say is, it sounds like you're willing to meet right away, and I don't really know what the holdup is at this point, but as long as you guys can really be on top of that, because nobody here should have to expect that their pay isn't, nobody, we should all expect that when we do our work, we get paid, and they don't get paid enough, as far as I'm concerned, to not get paid, for not get paid for their work.
And paying them what they deserve.
Yeah, exactly, and for the woman who's writing the checks, it sounds like maybe you're looking into seeing.
Everything will be looked at.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you could just try to help me, are we, is the board saying that the police haven't been paid the back pay yet?
Mr. Chairman, this conversation has to end.
Yes.
It's an ongoing process.
So we have to, I tried to say what I could say, and not, I just wanted to make sure I had a.
Employees aren't being paid by the town, and it's taxpayers' money that pays the employees, you know, why is it? Taxpayers have a right to understand why their service people are not being paid. I know when we made a mistake with the paraprofessionals at the school, we cut the check the next day, because the mistake was identified.
So we, they filed agreements with us, we've responded, so now.
The grievance had nothing to do with the back pay.
The grievance was with regards to that, so we responded to it through council, and we're waiting, we'll probably have a meeting, but we've responded.
My frustration level is as high as theirs. That's all I can say on the matter. Anyone else? Yes, Beverly?
I know the Board of Selectmen have always stated on several occasions that they want transparency, and the Patrolmen's Association has also stated clearly that they're for transparency. I've been reviewing the warrants since June of 2015, and those are the paid vendor bills. And around October of 2016, I was told that I had to fill out a public records request that as of January of 2017, that was going to be the policy, but they were going to start it early, probably because of something that maybe I saw in the warrants.
All right, that's, let's not bring that into it, let's just continue with your question.
There was a lot of talk about the cruiser mileage and the wax gas bills. I have been looking at the gas bills all year, and previously, if you look at the gas bills, it shows the site where the gas was purchased and who the officer was. Last week, when I looked at the gas bills, that information was white, whited out. And.
Is there a question here now?
The chief and. I have more, okay.
All right, we have three minutes. If you need to get on the agenda, we might have to do that for next week.
Well, there was a big discussion about the mileage and the wax bills, and if you look at the mileage, I mean, it's all accountability, and.
Okay, I'm going to stop this, you, I'll get you on the agenda for the next one, and you can discuss this, and we can get it going, because in the interest of time, in the interest of time, this sounds like it's going to take a while.
I also want to say, you know, I'm glad to see all the policemen here for support, and I wish that maybe they would show up for support when we have our Memorial Day parade. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just in response to the gas bills.
Yep.
It came to my attention that some of the information being released on the gas bill was not subject to the public records law, was actually exempted, and I brought that to the attention of a few people in town who were actually causing those to be accidentally released, and since that problem is corrected, that's why the information's holding.
And the mileage is on those wax bills that have been looked at since 2015?
Can I just say something you're talking about?
Please. I gave you time, I gave him time. Do you wish to be on the agenda to discuss this in the next meeting?
Yes.
Please put that one on the agenda. Yes, ma'am.
How come the police cruisers don't purchase gas at Billy's Sitco Downtown?
Chief's right there.
Wait a minute, because, well, you can answer that. What I'm saying.
Right, but not in this meeting.
Huh?
You can take that up with the chief, and then if you don't get the answer that you wish, you can bring it to us. If you have a question regarding a department, you should bring the question to that department, and then if you don't get the answer that you require, then you bring it to the board, that's all part of the public meeting.
So if I put in an email, I will get an email back?
If you email the chief, you will email it back? Yes.
Okay, because my only, the reason I'm asking is because, obviously, he's local.
Yep.
And when you go down to that other place there, that's a big corporation, and quite frankly, they don't need the money. We should be supporting our town businesses, so I will, I will do that.
Thank you. Sir?
Question, how does, how does the police department turn in their payroll every week? I know when I ran the highway department, I was in charge of that, I got the payroll turned into the county. Now, you're trying, the county, and we went over it, everything was fine. I can't understand why there's a lack or the overtime for years past, I don't understand that. How did it happen?
It was a miscalculation and a misinterpretation, I can't get into it.
Oh, all right, I just, I just, question.
I appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
Regarding the payment in the Attorney General file, I understand that you can't speak on it, stated in the paper, decision we made Thursday, I'm assuming after the executive meeting, I'd like to know if you can inform us, the townspeople, when you do make a decision, what that decision is, it's going to be made public or when?
Yes. When the decision is made, people will know what the decision was.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Sir, I just want to correct the answer that was given to the townspeople in the last meeting in regards why we don't get the local channels, particularly channels 22, 40, and I think CBS 3, or whatever that is. There was a question by gentleman, and the answer by the board was that there was not, that depends on a contract. This is incorrect answer. Correct answer is that Comcast will gladly give us channel 22, 40, channel 3, but it's not their decision. How decision was made, there was somebody somehow, I think it was about three, four[1782.29] years ago, say at Oshkosh, Wisconsin, or somewhere, looked in the map and says, okay, Warren, Worcester County, Boston Channel, and that's what we got. As you, some of you might remember, some of you who were in the board, I think we had over six hundred signatures, then people, board of selectmen would receive those signatures, would send to state senators and representatives, see if they can do anything, also balls they will send, and we did not get a answer. So, just for the record, it's got nothing to do with the contract we negotiate with the Comcast, it's gotta do with FCC, and that's how they come up to it, and they point at Warren, Worcester County, we get Boston channels, so.
They can steer us in the Boston market.
Right, and if board of selectmen or the people wanna sign, proceed with another petition, maybe this time something would happen, but Comcast told us they would gladly do it, providing they get okay from FCC.
All right, who was that that asked the question?
That was, Jimmy.
Jimmy. You brought that up about emergency preparedness, so we weren't then...
That was Jimmy McKee.
Was it Jimmy who brought up those channels?
Yes.
All right, so we can just let you go. Yes, Beverly?
The police association going on Facebook with their complaint, is that a violation of the town's social media policy?
I will not speak about this litigation. I'm not gonna speak about it moving forward, thank you. Sir?
Okay.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name's Al San...
Welcome to Warren, sir.
Thank you. Actually, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm sorry, Warren Pumps closed, very sorry. My name's Al San...
Right.
Right.
Right, right. Our pop's still going, a little bit. I just wanted to invite everyone to, we're having a car show up on the hill at Palmer
Motorsports Park this year, and this is our third benefit of this season, it is to benefit Homes for our Troops, which is a really good cause, we had a previous benefit on July fourth, to benefit New England cops, Concerns of Police Survivors, and we had another benefit earlier out here to benefit the veterans.
Yeah, that was great.
And I'm glad, I'd like to welcome you all, here's a twenty-dollar parking fee, and it goes completely to charity, it's a chance for y'all to come on up and see what Palmer Motorsports is all about. Palmer Motorsports, I'm not, I'm only gonna take my three minutes, and that's it, but it's a really great facility, and this is something that's important to us, because it brings a lot of people into the community, and it's a real gemstone, and I'd really like to ask your support, because it's something we should all be proud of, to have here. I have drivers come from all over the world, just to come here to drive here.
What's the date, sir?
That would be October eighth, Sunday.
And that's the Porsche show?
Car show, Porsche show, yes.
Okay, car show, Porsche show, and there's a swap meet there as well?
There's a swap meet as well.
Okay, twenty dollars, and it all goes to Homes for Troops?
Parking fees, yes, and that, to benefit Homes for our Troops.
And what's the time?
Nine AM.
Until what?
We will have food on site.
Until...
Nine, nine to four PM. If anybody has any questions for me, I'll gladly answer them, thank you very much.
Not a problem, next time you have this, let us know, Becky, you have something up on your site, right?
We do, and we run it, the July fourth, we run the Fire Cap, or fifty, we call it, which is a bicycle race, which everyone's welcome to that, that benefits the New England cops, which is Concerns of Police Survivors, which is a great benefit, because what it does is it, it helps out the people that, the law enforcement officer who dies in the line of duty, anyone that's involved in that, it's a big problem. If anybody has any questions for me, I'm glad to answer them.
Sweet. Becky, welcome. I think there's a PDF that I can, don't know, you can throw it up on the site? Excellent. All right, we got two more.
Mr. Gagnor, have you finished the evaluation on the chief?
No. Yes.
When are you going to? Isn't there a deadline?
As soon as it is done, as soon as it is done.
It started, it started June.
As soon as it is done, it will be turned in, yes.
Just for the record, Warren Pumps is still here, although...
He is.
We have been sold.
Yep.
That's good to know.
Okay.
I just wanna say...
No, no, hold on, hold on. Before you speak, I told you before, I am gonna, if you control yourself, if you lose control in the meeting, I'm going right back to where I was before, okay? First off, good to see you. What do you got?
I just wanna say that shirt was good on you.
There you go.
Thank you, Brian. Next. All right. Yes, Warren?
Do you know what progress, if any, has been made on the water up on Leach Tree?
We're waiting...
On the engineering?
No, for the West Warren Water District to respond to Mr. Scalen.
Ah, the West Warren Water District to respond to Mr. Scalen, because they have to sponsor...
Correct.
They have to sponsor it, so, we thought that we could do it, and then have that, we could sponsor the engineering, that grant, and then have them sponsor the other, nope, West Warren has to do it all, so we're waiting on them, balls in their court. Beverly?
Did you table number nine?
Is that the CIC?
Yes.
Yes, that was at their request.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
No.
Jerry?
Is this still comments and concerns?
It is.
Quick question.
Yes.
Were they gonna fix the door to the town hall?
Concerned citizen that I spoke to has been on his own, and using his own labor, that door is ready to be hung, the molding is all done, we're waiting for Jack to take a peek at it, and say, yeah, we're good, he took the old door, he fixed it, and he's gonna hang the old door back on there, and all should be well, and then we'll still wait. Bruce, have you received anything back from that historical guy that was supposed to... Okay, so regardless, it will be done, not as expediently as anyone and everyone would like, but it will be done.
Put him on the payroll.
All right, and, okay, next meeting, October third, we're gonna go back to weekly, because